Are we ready? All right, so I'll call the August 11th regular meeting of the La Habra Heights City Council to order. And we just came back from closed session.
We did discuss the items on the closed session agenda and there's no reportable action. That is all.
Okay, I'll do roll call. Norm?
Here.
Brian?
Here.
Greg?
Here.
Carol?
Here.
John's here. All right, let's stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, presentations.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to have a second to recognize our fire chief Mitch Brookhiser, who is retiring. So Mitch has been with us for the last few years, helped us transition greatly. Mitch is here, he wanted to come in and say a couple of words and thank council for his time there and so invite the fire chief up to come up and say a couple of good words.
It's official. And I'm on the podium.
Okay. City council, mayor, honored guests of the city of La Habra Heights. I just wanted to take a moment of your time before we move on and before I move on to acknowledge and thank you for allowing me to be honored as your fire chief for the last two years and nine months. I thought I could give you a quick assessment before I leave. I think I'm leaving it in good hands and much better than I found it when I first got here. It was back in November of 2022 that I want to especially acknowledge Councilman Bergman and Mayor Papisah because they were on the oral board that interviewed me to come in here and take the helm. As you might recall at that time, it was the department that had been here since 1942, a very old department, steeped in tradition and a volunteer spirit. I was asked to come in and see what I could do to repair some of the issues that were at hand. It was a daunting task, I might say, but I think that over the two years and nine months that I've been here, I've left it in better shape than I found it and I hope more sustainable for the new administration that's taking over. I came in on November 2nd, November 22nd, 2022 was my start date. I immediately performed an assessment of operational readiness in December of 2022 along with an audit of the income and expenses. I put everything on a manageable platform so that the, that your budget for both, for all things, fire, EMS and/or ALS, I should say, and your brush clearance program were line item to put into a manageable budget. We could track how things, how money was spent and where we were losing money in the department or what was costing us more than we anticipated. Audited all of your fire equipment and all the inventories, dealt with legal issues and litigations, grant resolutions and audits. We had a staffing shortage at the time, we had a recruitment issue, compliance with local EMS agency policies, we were having issues with that as far as our ALS and our paramedic program, and then restructuring of the admin staff of the fire department. There's a old saying that my prosecutor girlfriend once said is, "All people want in life is to be seen, heard and feel like they're making a difference." And I think when you have a volunteer organization like this, those three things, being seen, heard and making a difference are very important to the volunteer. And I think that we've tried to carry that spirit into managing the La Habra Heights Fire Department differently than past administrations and I think the results have paid off with completely staffed, seven days a week, fire stations, a brand-new fire engine that we just brought into play and then a continuing turnover, but more people wanting to come to La Habra Heights because it's an attractive option for them as a one, as a future or potential firefighter that moves on from this place. I call the La Habra Heights Fire Department the smallest little fire department in, or the biggest little fire department in Southern California because our people have gone from La Habra Heights all throughout the state of California to represent this city because this is where they started. In February of 2023, we did an equipment giveaway to Mexico and since then we've done two, I think two other deliver, two other offloading of just extra equipment that we were storing here that we just couldn't use. We're trying to clean up the operation here. Also in February, we had a type 3 that we sold. We were paying a monthly fee for a barn over at the church that we were keeping apparatus in. We have since ended that contract. I think that was one of the goals. In April of 2023, I was with Councilman Zazula when we were first trying to pave the Hellis Hydrant up there, trying to get it paved and get that all set up so we could put that into operation. And by December of '23, that was an operational option that we had to protect the hillside. Contract renewals while I was here, we went through all the contracts with, that we had with all of our different vendors and I think that we've made a significant change in those areas. Right now, we're trying to get First Duke to replace 3DI, which costs us $35,000 a year. We let go of UCLA and for E, for continued education and we replaced that with EMS QI. That's our new contractor. We had no tracking system involved in the department to track the NFPA items that need to be tracked by a fire department if we're ever audited or if anything ever happens. And we run into litigation problems through PS Trax, a tracking system that all of our firefighters are now using to track daily checks, apparatus and equipment maintenance. We looked into the image trend contract that you had with, with your NFRS and with your EMS reporting and we decided to stick with digital EMS solutions. They were the most cost-effective method, but in that survey, we found out that NFRS was part of your image trend contract and we got that all figured out. And now everyone checks in through an NFRS-type reporting system and that way we can, we can send that information up to the state. One thing that was very significant, I think, in the change over was some of the people that did the most to help me, I can't say I did all this by myself, but one of them was Don Stark, I want to acknowledge her. Angie Martinez for the, for the patience she had working the budget with me over and over again to try to get it worked out. Ed Martin for his zealousness and commitment to the, to the cause of the organization and his recruitment efforts to keep the, keep the fire engine with people, with eager volunteers every shift. Ryan Jorgensen for stepping up both as our EMS coordinator, paramedic coordinator and now our BCP coordinator. Also Al, I'll call to you, I'll remember Al. I couldn't have done it without him when he was here. He was really a mentor to me the whole time he was here. Christina Aguilera, Grace Andres and of course, Rafferty Woolbridge, my boss. It was a pleasure serving you. I can't say enough about how proud I am to be a part of the legacy of La Habra Heights Fire Department. Thank you very much for having me and I appreciate you guys.
I want to thank you very much for, I can't believe two years and nine months have gone past already because it's, it's good you didn't ask me how long ago it was because I probably would have said a little over a year ago or something. But thanks for coming on board. It was, you did a really good job and it was fun during the interview talking to you and it was really great having, letting you run the department for a while. Like you said, you've done a lot and you're leaving it in good shape, so thank you very much.
Yeah, I do remember the, the interview like it was yesterday and I would have said the same thing, that it couldn't have been two years and nine months. But one thing I do remember is, wow, this guy's got some wild ambitions and if he only gets half of what he says he wants to do done, that would be pretty impressive. But, you know, Chief, you, you, I think exceeded our expectations with the amount of work that you did. I mean, the department is really not recognizable from what it was when you, when you took the reins. And I know Brian and I said, you know, you think this guy's going to take this thing the way it is right now? So we're, we're, I think, as happy to have you here as, as you were, I think, to be here. So we're just so, so pleased and so tickled with the way, the way you've kind of grown the department and matured the department. And, you know, I want to thank, you know, the other chiefs that are here tonight also. You know, as you pointed out, it, we wouldn't be here today without this leadership team that we have in the fire department and I'm just so impressed by what you've done and what our, our leadership team has done here on the department. It's just, it's just unrecognizable. So thank you. It's, it's obvious there was, you know, passion and caring exhibited by the leadership team to get us here. And, you know, when you talk to the, the, you know, our fire professionals and I, you know, I know a lot of people call them kids, but they're, they're truly fire professionals that you guys, you know, nurture and grow into very, very desirable employees for other departments. We have a lot of people coming here to recruit our folks and it's, I think it's a reflection of the leadership team. So again, thank, I thank the three of you and Chief, thank you for the two years and nine months that you gave us of your devotion. Thank you, Chief. Okay. Any other presentations? Okay, let's move into public comments. I've got one card for just general public comments from Stephen. And Stephen, I've got one for 16. I heard there might have been another one you wanted to talk about. Is there two or just 16?
Um, yeah, I was going to say that there were a couple. 17, community risk reduction and 21 HSIP and B5. I really need to hear the staff report and questions.
Okay, no, 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 I'll, no, I'll call you back up.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I knew which ones you wanted to. I've got them on your card now, so I know when to pause and.
Thanks.
So this is for five, just for five.
I sent you some comments on some of the agenda items, so I won't repeat that. Number 12 on the roads projects, the council really needs to look at this soon and close. There's more roads left to do than the funding. There's only three projects left after the current one. The current one is called a double project, but it's really only a single project, so that puts us behind a year. The Brown Act says that the descriptions in the agenda should give people an idea of what's going to be discussed so they know if they should comment, they know if they should comment. I look at 17, community risk reduction. It's recommended the city council review and discuss. We had a similar description before. I think if I did a survey of people and there's no way that they would know or suspect or think that this is about using drones for weed abatement inspections. It's totally disguised language. So something to think about. Most descriptions like, you know what they are, but this one kind of stood out for not being that way. Then reading the Heights Life, something I've mentioned before, is they repeatedly say no city funding. That's kind of like a mostly peaceful protest or smoke but didn't inhale. There, there is no check written to them, but we figured a number of years ago, they got about $30,000 in in-kind donations, like fee waivers, paraphernalia storage, things like that. Also when they thank their sponsors for music in the park, in Heights Life, they left out the biggest sponsor, the city itself, which is the residents. So rather than denying the help, it would be nice if they just said, "Thank you." Thanks.
Thank you, Stephen. Any other public comments? If this is on 18, you can come up when we do 18. I'll call you up on 18. That way there you can hear the, the discussion and then inform your. All right. I don't see, John, did you have any committee comments for the EPC or anything? Okay. Any city council comments? All right, let's move into our admin reports. City manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So we start from Committee Member Dominguez. The Public Safety and Emergency Preparedness Committee have a couple of events scheduled for September. So there's two Saturdays. On Saturday, September 9th, they're going to be holding a CERT training and a workshop. So those that are in the Heights that have certifications and have not reached out already to commit a member Villa Gomez or Dominguez, please kind of reach out to us. We'll get you guys connected. We're looking to try to put together a little bit of a training program. We have somebody that's going to come in and provide some training related to CERT topics and things. And it'll also be a good opportunity for people that are interested in CERT programs to be able to come in, meet other CERT members, ask some questions and see what goes on and be able to, to get involved if they're interested in it. So that will be on Saturday, September 20th and it'll be in the morning. You'll start seeing some of that information come out in Guacam and other areas as well. And then also the following Saturday on September 27th, we're going to have a next winter of Firewise workshops and programs. That will be that, the morning of Saturday, September 27th, we will be having a little presentation from the Red Cross that'll come in to talk about being evacuation-ready and some of those things that you should prepare for. So like I said, a couple, some of that information will start flowing out here as we get those all scheduled and squared away. So that, and then also in October, we will be having the next quarterly cleanup. So we'll have October 18th and Saturday will be the, the next quarterly cleanup and Hacienda Road trash litter pickup as well. So if you have any questions, feel free to let us know.
Okay. The attorney.
No report.
CNN report is filed. If any of the council members have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Questions? Fire chief.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to personally thank Chief Brookhiser for having the confidence in me to make me his second and allowing me to take complete control of operational side of the fire department. As he stated, we took that department from what was almost impossible to staff and engine every day to now you have what Mayor Papisah likes to say is a robust fire department. We have every day, anywhere between 10 to 12 personnel on shift every single day. So it's a daunting task, but we accomplished it and I want to acknowledge Chief Brookhiser for having that confidence in me to take that task on. As far as the fire report, we have an uptick in the number of fire calls. We had two significant events. On July the 7th, we had a small grass fire, but on July the 10th, we had a significant fire at 1329 White Hill. And it is because of that staffing that we had that we were able to put two lines into operation and quickly help extinguish the, this house that was fully involved. It was fully involved when we got there and with the help of LA County and Santa Fe Springs, we were able to extinguish it in somewhere under, under 25 minutes. So there was concern for, for the exposures, but the house itself had been burning, free burning for quite a while. Just to give you a little information, if you didn't know already, the owner was having trouble putting his daughter to bed and so it was about 1:00. He smokes in the morning and he smokes smoke. So he went out to the front. He has a front garage of, that's in front of his house and he saw the garage was completely in flames. Well, the smoke that he was smelling was inside the house and it already traveled across the attic. So when we got there, we were able to extinguish it. No, no injuries to anyone, but the contents were completely, there was a total burnout, unfortunately. He had some pretty, a lot of fire load in that garage that added to the complex and also the free burning that was the cause of some of the stuff that he had in there. Also the report on July the 18th, we had a fire in a carport with LA County and we were able to help them establish a water line and put hose line in effect. They had about four cars burned in a carport there. Other than that, our usual 69 calls for services are right around the average that we have for the, for the, this time of year. And any updates that I have are on the new engine. We're still in the process of getting that so we can put that into service. There was an issue getting the Panasonic tough bug so that we can have LA County come out and upgrade the radios and make them so that we can go into service. Other than that, that's all I have. Thank you. Turn it over to my fire marshal, unless you have any questions for me.
Chief, do you have an estimate for when the new engine will go in service?
I'm sorry?
Do you have an estimate for when the new engine will be placed in service? Will become the front line?
The problem is that there's been such an influx of requests for the tough bug that we needed and we had, I had to go to my LA City counterparts to help me acquire and purchase that item. LA County, they had a, anywhere between a 60 to 90 day wake time, so I was able to get that within four weeks. So we should be getting the rig ready to put into service within, I would say, three weeks.
And Rafferty, we're working on the proper dedication event?
I'm scheduling a meeting with Senator Archel in his office right now.
Perfect. Thank you.
And now turn it over to the fire marshal for his report.
Good evening, Mayor, distinguished council members. I'd also like to share in Chief Martin's sentiment toward Chief Brookhiser and having the confidence in me to have promoted me from operations where I spent five years as a fire captain and paramedic coordinator with this, the city of La Habra Heights and having the confidence in me to promote me to chief officer and run the brush clearance and now community risk reduction program. So thank you very much, Chief Brookhiser. So as of July 2025, our parcel inspections totaled 152. We had compliant 58, non-compliant 94. Our failed first inspection count was 69, failed final inspection count was 15 and our failed pre-abatement was 10. Noticeable uptick in failed first inspections. A lot of that, we added a footnote at the bottom that reflects inspection numbers reflected include brush clearance, vegetation management, fire locks and roadside clearance. This uptick in number really reflects the fire locks. So right now, in addition to our brush clearance and vegetation management program, what my office is doing is we are going throughout the city and we're finding every gate that is automated or not automated and that requires a fire lock box with either remote keys or some other way of accessing the gates for emergency vehicle access purposes only. So that is the uptick that we are seeing. Other than that, we are pretty much on par with historical numbers. I don't actually have the data for the historical numbers of where we were this time last year simply because we are using a software known as 3DI, which that contract will sunset in December of this year. I was able to go out and find a much more robust program for a fraction of the cost, which is known as First Duke's proprietary product that is known throughout the fire service industry to be a, not only a game changer, but a, a, really a golden egg in our industry in terms of fire inspection software. So it'll not only provide the fire inspection data that we need, but it will also allow us to take that data and upload it into our, our operations iPads, which will give the fire captains real-time information as to where the lock boxes are located for, and in particular residents, when they're responding to a fire or even a medical aid, all the emergency shut-offs are and any additional information that may be of benefit for the captains, such as, as an example, sub-levels when approaching a structured fire. So that program is to begin in January and we're going to start building that out in October. So that, the reason I bring that up is because that, from my understanding and speaking with the folks over at First Duke, they will be able to take the data from historical years, say the 20, year 2026, or even if we're starting in 2026, January 2027, we can look at the years past, previous data and for cross comparison. Open to any questions at this time.
So just on, I'm looking at the fire inspections. It says July 2025. Is this the 152 just for July, just for the month of July or is that the total to date?
That's for the month of July. I don't have the August data because we haven't hit the end of August.
What about May through July?
I don't have that data in front of me.
Okay. Yeah, if we could just next month, I'd like to see the trend, how we're kind of moving from month, month, month over month?
Will do.
They're working on a way to present that data in a fashion that makes sense.
Yep. Any questions? Sheriff's report.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor. For the month of July, we had one residential burglary, one vehicle burglary, one misdemeanor hit and run, one felony hit and run, one grand theft and one non-criminal domestic violence. We did have one forgery of a check. What I discovered, that a lot of people in this community write checks, they don't use any apps, Bevmo's, and they leave them out for the mailman to pick up. A lot of times, the mailman's not picking it up. My suggestion is that we take a trip to the post office and drop off our mail in the slots. The post office is eliminating mailboxes also because there is a lot of forgeries taking place with these, these checks. That's all I have.
Any questions for the sheriff? All right, let's move into the consent calendar.
On the consent calendar tonight, you have items nine through 14. Item nine is wave reading and full of ordinances, resolutions and meeting minutes on the agenda. Item 10 is approval of the warrants report for July 2025. Number 11 is minutes of the July 28, 2025 special city council meeting. Item 12 is resolution adopting FY 2025, 26, project of, project list funded by SB1 gas tax revenues. Item 13 is updated vacation of the La Habra Road within Powder Canyon and acceptance of grant of public service easements for emergency access, grant of in-growth easement for the Hellis Hydrant and access easement and declaration of restricted covenants. And item 14 is project updates and deadlines. You have any questions or would you like to pull them?
Anybody want to pull any of the items on the consent calendar? Get a motion?
Move approval, items nine through?
14.
14.
Second.
I just have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
It's, it's for the attorney, it's okay to handle all these habitat resolutions in this manner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Norm?
Hi. I second, so, so yes.
Yeah. Carol?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
John's yes. All right, let's move into the public hearing. Item 15.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item for you tonight is a protest hearing of unpaid brush clearance liens. These are for properties that the fire department has had to go out and abate for brush clearance. On the agenda tonight, there are two properties that are going to, are going to lean. One property on Sharpless and one on West Road that are up. We have worked to contact the property owners and also provide them additional information and opportunities to pay ahead of getting to this point. Otherwise, if city council is so inclined, the recommendation would be to overrule protests if any offered during the protest hearing and adopt Resolution 2025-06 confirming the purport of costs incurred by the city and authorizing the assessment of liens to be placed on the tax rolls effective August 11, 2025. You have any questions, staff would be happy to answer them for you.
Any questions for staff?
I have a couple of questions. First of all, the, uh, are either of these repeat offenders? And either of these repeat offenders been several times? More than once or more than, more than twice or more than three times?
One of them, yes.
Okay, the, um, I noticed if I'm not, see, one of these is vacant property?
Correct. Twelve, twelve-thirty West is currently vacant.
Okay, thank you. Oh, one more, one more question. Has there been any, have they reached out or have they talked to you about, uh, or have they ignored you?
Uh, they have reached out. We have had made attempts as well to contact them and have them resolve before we get to lien. Unfortunately, neither one have made it to that point. There were a couple other that were in the lien process, but the fire marshal and Dawn worked with the property owners and were able to get them to come in and, and pay the abatement costs prior going to lien.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Any public comments on this item? Take a motion?
I move to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six.
Norm?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
John's yes. Uh, item sixteen, adoption of the twenty twenty-five California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection Fire Hazard Severity Zone maps.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you want to talk a little or no? I'll let Chief Jorgensen talk a little bit about it and then I'll finish up.
So at the end of March of this year, the CAL FIRE had submitted the mandate that all cities that fall under the California High Fire and Very High Fire Severity Zones adopt new ordinances that pertain to the local CAL FIRE maps. This will have a direct impact on the city's ability to obtain state funding and state, essentially state reimbursements for any CAL FIRE or state fire resources requested in, on any SRA land throughout our city. Uh, we had one hundred and twenty days to adopt and, um, after speaking to the city manager, uh, we were going ahead and moving forward the adoption of the La Habra Heights City CAL FIRE maps. Uh, we've decided that, uh, instead of taking the, I believe, two and a half to five percent of the city that was under the yellow or the high fire severity zone, we've decided to, uh, broad stroke the very high fire severity zone throughout the entire city since those areas would inevitably be affected or impacted by any fire brands that would affect those homes that fall into those, uh, high fire severity zone areas on the map. So we moved forward to adopt one hundred percent La Habra Heights as a city that falls into the very high fire severity zone, under the CAL FIRE maps and adopt its local ordinance.
So this would be an inordinate, so the action tonight is to hold a public hearing and introduce, introduce ordinance twenty twenty-five zero three by title only. Um, and that is an ordinance of the city council of the city of La Habra Heights, California, adopting CAL Fires Fire Hazard Severity Zone pursuant to Government Code Section five-one-one-seven-nine and schedule a second reading and adoption for the September eighth, twenty twenty-five regular city council meeting.
Questions from council? I, I just have one that I just, maybe you can help me understand. What, what do we gain from bringing the entire city into a high fire zone rather than just adopting the map as is?
Protection. Yeah, so essentially, um, by classifying as very high fire severity zone, as opposed to high fire severity zone, we are encompassing a one hundred percent protection for the entire city.
Okay.
Reimbursement. It all comes under reimbursement.
Got it.
Typically, as we, when we adopt the building code standards, we take the extra step as part of that to designate the entire city as very high severity fire zone. And when you look at the areas of town, there's not much difference between, you know, Cypress and Repasado, or Avocado Crest and Awakate. Uh, so as part of that, if you designate the entire city, it falls as people are doing work, they have to meet those high severity fire zone requirements in the building code adoption. And it also creates, um, less confusion between different parts of town where some have, may have to follow a different set of guidelines and rules when there really realistically isn't a lot that's different. So it's an extra step that we usually take as part of the building code adoption process that we do.
And there's also substantial justification by the size of our roads. So if, roads are impassable, will be impassable in a fire main fire event and all over the city. So I think the adoption of this as an entire city in the, is proposed in resolution twenty-five oh-three is appropriate and logical.
And I guess the other question is, insurance companies go off the CAL FIRE maps, not off of our resolution. So our resolution shouldn't impact people's ability to get insurance? Because I know there is a difference between high and very high.
Yes. They look at the state map. So obviously, the map that's attached are what they look at because those are officially adopted by the state. As insurance companies will tell you, they don't use these maps as part of their way they look at their rate structures. They have their own data, their own analysis that they do as far as what they consider highest, the high-risk property or not, um, and that they don't necessarily look at these CAL FIRE maps as part of their process to it. But that's, at least the information we were provided when you talk to the insurance agencies and companies about that.
All right. Any other council questions? Go to the public. Do you have a question, Brian?
No, he might ask for a public comment.
I am, yeah.
Okay.
I'm there right now. Yeah, so, um, Stephen, you put in a card for this one?
Uh, thank you, Stephen Blackness, Attron Road. Tom, I just looked at it again. I don't see any mention in the staff report or resolution about making the whole city very high fire hazards of every zone. Might be a good idea, but, um, I think you have to tell people before you do it. If you read the, unless I missed the words, but there's, I can't see where it says in there that the whole city is designated that. It says to adopt the CAL FIRE map, which doesn't have the whole city that way. Um, I remember being either told or reading some years ago that zoning maps and other maps, people need to be able to look at them and find their lot and see if whatever it is the map about is about applies to them. This map doesn't do that. In fact, it's worse than the previous map, which had some transparency to it, so you kind of see through it. I did send in comments a couple of times on the city website, which reminds me of what people say to me, which I'm used to it. But, uh, people say, why won't I send in comments or emails? Do I never get a response? At least got your comments, thanks. So I suggest, you know, just as a, even if you had an automated response that said, thank you for your email, thank you for your comments, just so people know that it worked and got, it got to the city. Um, so I took a zoning map of the city with the parcels and streets and I overlaid it with the CAL FIRE map in Photoshop. Took about twenty minutes. Um, just kind of a quick and dirty, just so you could see it. Sent it out to you. Hopefully you got it. Um, that you can actually look at the map and see which zone a particular parcel is in. You know, for a lot of the city, it doesn't matter, but especially on the border regions between nothing and moderate and moderate and high and high and very high, I would think people would want to know which one they are. So I would ask you to think about and make the map have some usefulness to it so people can actually look at it and see where they are. Yes, they can go to the CAL FIRE website, put their address in, move around sliders and things to look, but, uh, some people aren't able to do that and they shouldn't have to do it if the paper map or the PDF map shows it. Thank you.
Sue, go ahead. Do you have a comment?
Yes. So the ordinance before you tonight is just to adopt the CAL FIRE map. The city does, the entire city is high severity fire zone as part of the building code amendments. So we did that back in twenty twenty-three when those came into place. Our building code is coming up again, so that will be coming up again here in October when we have in the first reading of the building code standards. Uh, we have to adopt by ordinance per the state their fire zone maps. So we have to adopt this map from the state, um, through reference as part of it. So that's why you have, the map is the CAL FIRE map that we received from CAL FIRE that's out on their, their website. And they did a little bit of outreach as part of releasing it for those things. This one is, the ordinance attached for you tonight is simply that. It's, it's us adopting by ordinance the map, CAL FIRE map because we have to.
So we just, we just co-mingle two different items in this discussion. So what we're, what we're voting on right now is just to adopt the map as is and not change the fire rating for any other part of the city?
Correct.
Okay. Are there any other public comments on this? All right, I'll take, uh, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh-three, accepting the, uh, CAL Fires Fire Hazard Severity Zone map.
Norm?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
John's yes. All right, I'll close the public hearing. Move into administrative items. Item seventeen.
Um, item seventeen tonight is community risk reduction, which is a continuation of a couple of meetings back. We had looked at some new technology that's out there. The council had heard a presentation from FireScore AI about some new technology they had related to identifying problem areas in real, real world situations as far as fire danger and risk. Um, at that, the council asked for them to look at a section of their town and provide and show some maps related to what their system and their software does so you can have a better idea as to what happens out there in the field, what these potential things would look like, if this is something that the council or the city or the brush clearance program would benefit from. Um, so as part of that, uh, we have a representative here from FireScore AI. He has another short presentation for it. I mean, he can kind of walk you through some of that information from the last council meeting that we were, we had a couple of meetings, a couple of months back and share some of that, that data with you.
And I'll just second that we probably do want to just, I, I know the attachment mentions that the use of drones in the attachment, but I would recommend that we be very transparent on this one, given that we do plan on moving forward, or if we do move forward, that this involves drones. Okay.
I understand what you said about an attachment.
There's, there's an attachment to this, to this item?
Staff, staff report.
Online, there's a separate attachment that talks about drone demonstrations for the fire department.
Oh, online?
No, the staff.
Staff report.
Staff report.
Staff report.
I, I don't know. It's, it's, I, I use the, I use the online version of the agenda and there's an, for me, there's an attachment that's, that I'm looking at. Anyway.
Yeah, the, the staff report in your, in your book. This is the attachment as a staff report that the mayor is talking about. He's looking at it off the website. So when you click the item, it pops up separately.
I'll show you after.
Okay.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor, and esteemed city council members and citizens of La Habra Heights. Uh, thank you for this opportunity and allowing me to come here today and present, uh, the next generation of proactive firefighting. And I've had the honor to work closely with the city of La Habra Heights to identify the hazards that are present in the city of La Habra Heights as we all sit here, uh, right now. And if we may move to the next slide, I look forward to sharing this with you all. So to solve the problem, we have to look at historic data. And the problem is, is that the data that we are currently relying on comes from the nineteen seventies and the nineteen nineties. Similarly, the imagery that is being used is at thirty meters per pixel. And shortly, you'll be able to see what thirty meters per pixel looks like over a parcel and what that means for an inspector, for a firefighter, for an insurance underwriter, for CAL FIRE, whomever it may be, ultimately what that means in terms of risk. Next slide. The tools that are being used today. I spent a great amount of time with other fire departments in Southern California, from Glendale over to Riverside County to San Diego, here in, nearby in Orange County. It's binoculars and boots on the ground. Now, that's not going to change. What needs to change is how we force multiply the tools in which our inspectors, our firefighters, our fire marshals, our fire chiefs are using the technology and that the best technology that is available today. Next slide. It goes back to pixels. What you see here is Griffith Park. And those pixels, those squares are thirty meters per pixel. And this is what the state-of-the-art fuel models, fire models that are being used right now by folks such as Lockheed Martin and Nvidia. They're relying on this data. Next slide. So I use the European Space Agency Sentinel Two satellite to then colorize and identify what these hazards would look like, looking at vegetation indices. I'm not able to see much here. This is a zoomed-out view. What you see in the red outlines are parcels, are homes in the very high hazard zone. Next slide. And sometimes when you zoom in, magical things happen. Unfortunately, here, I did not see any change. I see very old graphics, nineteen seventies, nineteen nineties. Next slide. And earlier I mentioned Lockheed Martin and Nvidia. They created a fire model in two thousand twenty-one, invested over thirteen million dollars to showcase what a fire model would look like. When I spoke to their head of research, said, hey, what did you base your data off of? And it went back to that thirty meters per pixel. You're not able to see a single tree in there, a single chaparral, oak, eucalyptus. It's not there. Next slide. Well, we're not doing that anymore. Next slide. What if AI understood not only text, but also current data describing the physical world in La Habra Heights? Imagine asking a query about fire risk without spending years to learn specialized GIS or CAD software. Our system looks at current vegetation, not historic. Here, for example, is biomass from last week, not three years ago. And here, our system is accounting for live fuel moisture, which changes on an hourly basis. The combination of these layers is a fuel model, which describes the risk in detail. This map shows risk within each individual parcel at nine hundred times the best resolution. But fire risk is not only a two-dimensional issue. Fire moves vertically even faster than horizontally. So imaging a system which can classify vegetation and buildings in three D, that way we can look at not only the canopy, but at fire hazards underneath it. And finally, by having a current three-D model of fuels around each And finally, by having a current 3D model of fuels around each property lets you run fire scenarios and simulations to explain specific homeowner actions and where those are required to disrupt fire pathways to structures. This future starts today in La Habra Heights. Join us in building the future of fire resiliency, where AI transforms physical world data into life-saving decisions. And this is the platform. And we've identified the most hazardous area in La Habra Heights, one in which we need to pay attention to, and that is located on Skyline Drive. And that fire model you just took a look earlier, that is a physics-based fire model that is using the state-of-the-art physical artificial intelligence. And we ran that simulation over a thousand times. And God forbid, it will blow to the ocean. Thank you.
Any questions for our guests?
Well, from my standpoint, it's quite an improvement over the last time you visited with us. And it's, it's very fascinating to see that 3D profile. Not just the pixelation that's incredibly important, but that. So it would be, it would be interesting, I mean, for us, not that it has to be done, but it would be interesting to be able to take a, have the fire marshal take a block area based upon your data and set up priorities within that block perhaps, so that we could, we could then calculate how, how much more effective we would be at using our limited manpower to, to find and deal with fire risks, high fire risks. So this is, I think, a wonderful step forward.
Thank you.
Any others?
I mean, I'm really impressed with, I guess, the data that you can pull out of the, out of the thing, because it's just unbelievable when you get into the 3D and you can look at actually the lower area and stuff. And you mentioned you did find a high-fire hazard area, which was where in our city?
Yes, sir. It is on East Skyline Drive. And the fire model that you just took a look right there, that is in La Habra Heights.
Okay.
Right now. Yes, sir.
And was that due to excessive brush and things like that?
Yes, sir. So there are several factors. We're taking into account humidity, moisture, wind speed. And when we look at weather base stations as well, we have to account that some of these weather base stations are far away. So when you look at fire risk in detail, you need to account the wind speed and how that impacts the moisture at the ground level as well. So we took into account many factors. And based off of that, our physical AI determined after thousands of simulations that this is the highest fire risk.
I mean, one thing I, I didn't realize they were doing, LA County actually has a person and they physically go out and they take clippings off of brush and things and measure the content and all that.
Yeah, they burn it. Yep.
They burn it. You're familiar with all of that.
Yes, yes, yes.
And I'm just thinking in my mind, this is just so light-years ahead of what they're doing that, I mean, what they're doing is manual labor doing essentially what you're doing with the automation, essentially.
Correct. And, and really bringing, you know, NASA-grade sensors identifying not just the vegetation indices, but also the species. This Thursday, I'm flying over the LA Arboretum with Mr. Jim Henrich. And we're then identifying seven thousand perfectly labeled vegetation species with this hyperspectral sensor, which imagine it has the vision of a bumblebee and a hummingbird and many other species that are out there. And so then the physical AI will then start to count exactly how many chaparral, how many oak, does it have bark beetle infestation? It just gets smarter and smarter to protect us. And then for us to take that proactive action and determination on what to do next.
So you could, you can actually determine definitely like the difference between a dead tree and a live tree and all that, no problem at all, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And we can do that today.
And same with the brush?
Yes. It's the vegetation species, because, you know, as I'm expanding worldwide, I'm going to Australia next week. They have very similar climate and similar vegetation, but they have other vegetations too. So the vegetation species and then identifying precisely even the exotic ones, that's the next step. That's going to make it even smarter.
And could you, I know we talked about this last meeting a little bit with you that, because one big concern is privacy and people out in their yards and I think you're spying on them, all that. So could you talk to that a little bit, that, I mean, you described last time that you can't even see any of that material that's blocked out?
Correct, yes. And even though it is blocked out and we're not looking at traditional imagery that you see with your iPhone, this is multispectral imagery, hyperspectral imagery. It does not care about clear imagery as you and I are looking at one another. It cannot derive much from that. So then, again, we're going back to the 1970s and 1990s era of technology. So the imagery in itself is going to be shades of yellow, green, blue. And this is then reading off moisture content and allowing the physical AI to understand the shape of this tree through the different moisture contents, because some trees have higher moisture content in certain areas. So there's a lot of factors that go into there. Nevertheless, we still engaged our privacy protocols, whereas the home in itself becomes blurred out, the backyards, the swimming pools become blurred out. Any human being standing there, if there's a puppy, if there's a dog, it gets blurred out. So my top priority is privacy.
And the question I guess I would ask is, how does the technology know to blur out all living animals and human beings and things like that?
Yes. So there's models that start to become much more smarter and faster. And so it keeps looking at different images online of different types of dogs, different types of human beings, different colors, shapes and sizes. And then it clearly identifies a human being. It clearly identifies a dog, a cat. And this was interesting because in the escalation of artificial intelligence, granted, artificial intelligence has been around since the mid-1900s. It just now has the computation capability to do better things. The godmother of AI who really helped develop AI, Fei-Fei Li, started her models with identifying cats and dogs. So this was interesting and this was in the early 2000s. So it has expanded and advanced very much since then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the, so what we know about large language models is that the learning curve just continues to get deeper and deeper and deeper. And so I, I take from what you're saying that the more you run this in our city, the more detailed your knowledge of the underlying fuel is, right? So the more, the more we run it, the more complete the analysis becomes?
Yes. So your traditional large language model, for example, GPT, ChatGPT, I'm sure everyone's used it, it has an option to use your camera, take a picture of something and then it identifies it. Or there's iNaturalist, which identifies a certain plant if you take a photo of it. The issue with those large language models, scientists refer to this as garbage in and garbage out. And if you notice sometimes when utilizing these large language models, you can ask a question and it won't get it right. It'll start spewing some other data or something that's not relevant. And you read it over again, you say, you know what, this isn't correct. For me, it was in Colorado, asking for the best place to find pancakes with my son. And it sent me a phone number and I was going to call to make reservations and I ended up calling Life Alert and they were trying to sell me a subscription to Life Alert. So versus this physical AI model, it's only trained for fire. Its sole purpose is fire. Its sole purpose is to give actionable intelligence to the user and in this case, to the fire department.
So the takeaway from that is there's relatively little garbage is going to come in?
I will not allow any garbage to come into this platform because there's something very important at stake here and that's the livelihoods of human beings. There's places of worship, there are schools, there are retirement centers. And if I'm going to do this, going back to my time, ten years with the Department of Defense in Afghanistan, when I shut down the burn pits, I'm putting my name on this and I'm going to make sure that it's done right. So there's no garbage and I'm reading it over and over and so are my scientists.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
On the property on Skyline, Chief Jorgensen, did you go up and, after, after we got the result, did you look at that and what's your opinion of the, the quality of the output of the model?
Surprisingly enough, after reviewing this property, I did go up there. And I'd been up there many times just on training evolutions when I was a captain. And it's just the areas that Alex had pointed out on his fire model are unrecognizable because I don't have access to that side of the property. And that's fairly common with the parcels that I'm inspecting and my inspectors are inspecting throughout the city is that we don't have access to many of these areas. When it comes to the law and what we are allowed to inspect is pretty much what is, you know, what we can see, whether we can view it from a neighbor's property or I can view it from the street. I don't have the ability to view somebody's backyard if they don't invite me on. If they're not home, they're not answering, they're not responding to my notices. I don't have the ability to go out there and, and view this. So, no, I was unaware that this property actually had those elements of danger attached to them because I wasn't able to access that property from, but the front of it looks great.
How large, do you know how approximated the size of the area?
It's about one to 1.5 acres, my understanding.
Of where the hazardous brush areas?
Probably about half an acre.
Okay.
I have some Luddite-based questions.
Please.
Because I'm slow. How did you, did you send your drone over the entire city and find, and this one property was the worst? I didn't quite understand what you were saying.
Yeah, thank you. That's an excellent question. No, so what, what I, what I did initially is I'm, I'm using Sentinel 2. It's the European Space Agency satellite. And this out-the-box from 2016, from its launch, is at ten meters per pixel in resolution. Then I trained it against NAEP imagery, which is high-resolution imagery. That's from California all the way to the east coast. And then I brought it down to one meter per pixel. And there's approximately ten bands that are not visible to the human eye that the Sentinel 2 satellite has. So from there, I was able to scan and identify the vegetation indices, the moisture, the humidity, the, the fuel loads, the biomass, which is fuel loads. And then based off of that, I started developing a model. And then after I've developed the model, then we fly a drone once, 300 feet above, and then it confirms, yes, this is accurate. And then it blurs out the fire model that you just saw there.
So you used other data from not your equipment to zone in on a potential problem property? And then you sent your drone out just to look at that property? Is that what you said?
Again, it goes back to the modeling and yes, this is a method called super-resolution, which is state-of-the-art. There's only three people on this planet that are familiar with this method and one of those scientists are on our team. And so that's the super-resolution imagery that you saw where it's zooming in from the top, coming into biomass and then to the moisture. And then the imagery from the drone is then confirming the results because it's getting a much more granular view of it.
So what, how big a part of the heights did you look at?
We looked at the entire city.
And then this, this is one property?
This is one of many. This is one of many.
Okay.
But the, the one that is the highest priority.
Of all the properties?
Of the entire city. Yes.
I have a question for Chief Ryan, she's a chief, captain. How many properties is it that you can't get at? Have you got any kind of a tally of that?
Over half.
All of, all?
I would say over half of the city. We are either unable to access the property or in terms of the vacant parcels, many of them were unable to access the parcel in and of itself because of just unsafe or steep terrain.
Okay.
And we just don't have enough people. Which speaks credibility to the quantifiable data. Alex, how many parcels can you inspect in, in an hour?
About 100 parcels.
And when can we have that data uploaded again?
Twenty-four hours from the time you upload the data.
Okay, so what would be the proposal then? You would look at the entire heights and?
I call it a triage.
Top ten parcels?
That's a good question, Mayor Engelhardt, or Councilwoman Engelhardt. I look at what we refer to as a triage map. It's kind of like my paramedic brain going to work, where I look at what red is dead in terms of vegetation, yellow is dying and green is healthy. Okay, so what this does is it gives us a benchmark as to where to go first and what areas to tackle first. So we eliminate the threat, we mitigate that threat immediately.
Thank you.
Norm?
Yes, a question. On some of the properties, the drone has inspected, have you been able to inspect it in person also? And see if you agree with what the drone said or not?
Can you repeat that question, please?
Yes. The property shown on, on, a few minutes ago was a piece of property that was inaccessible to the inspector. Has, has our inspectors looked at some of the properties the drone has looked at also and compared their findings with that of the, with that of the drone?
Some yes and some no. That's a very good question. In terms of the ones that we have not, we have not had any reason to suspect that they were out of compliance because from the street they looked, as I said before, great. However, the drone imagery shows something other than that. And, you know, again, to the naked eye, you know, I may be driving by a piece of vegetation or a parcel and look at the vegetation, you know, unless it's overgrown or it's, looks, you know, dead essentially. It, you know, it doesn't, I can't, you know, rechlorophyll levels just by looking at it. So that being said, yeah, not all of the parcels. Some of them actually passed inspection. When I went back and looked at some of the data that Alex had given me, I went back to my recent historical data on my own and saw that these, these parcels actually looked pretty good. They passed inspection and to my surprise, they're a community threat.
Okay, you haven't run any situations where, after looking at drone data, you went back and looked at it again and decided, no, the drone's wrong. This was a good piece of property or, or whatever?
No.
Just curious. Thank you.
All right, any other counsel?
Well, I guess my question would be if you looked at it and it was okay and the drone looked at it and said, this is a potential problem, what would we do? We'd make the people cut down?
I, I don't think so. I mean, I think what the chief is saying is this is a tool in his toolbox to help him prioritize where he goes out and does, you know, his inspections and, and, you know, begins to enforce our brush clearance program in a way that I think resolves the highest risk to the city first. But the problem that we've got right now is, you know, our inspections are, you know, I think he does use I think he does use some statistics, some data in how he prioritizes his work. He's told us that in the past, that frequent flyers, trouble properties tend to get inspected sooner rather than later to try to bring them into conformance. But that's a very limited, I think what we're hearing is that's a fairly limited set of data that we have. And number two is that, you know, that's built off of previous inspections that are all flawed based off of the inability to see the entire property. What this allows us to do using, you know, satellite data coupled with, I'll say, a spot check using, you know, other imagery is to help us prioritize the highest risks to the city and get those mitigated before, you know, there's a catastrophic fire.
Now, this was East Skyline. It wasn't the Habitat property, was it?
No.
So, I mean, and given our limited resources, you know, in this space, I think we have to begin, you know, a very risk-based brush enforcement program because we don't have unlimited resources. And quite frankly, I'm even worried that as we begin to ramp up our brush inspection, the city's resources are limited. There's only so many properties we can afford to abate. And we can't abate every property that says, I'm not going to abate. So we've got to be very tactical in how we spend our money on abating these high-risk areas. And we don't have a mechanism today to do that other than, you know, just the, I don't want to diminish any work the chief is doing here, but it truly is very unscientific. It's, we're using data that we have that it's very unscientific data. It's just, who are the frequent flyers? What property can I see from the road or from public viewing that has these issues? And that's the nail we're hitting on the head. But given what's happened earlier this year and the 31 people that have died, I think we owe it to our residents to come up with a better mousetrap here to solve this problem. And I'll tell you, this technology is technology that all the utilities that are in high-fire areas are using. I mean, it's almost identical to what they're using to determine where to shut off power, where to protect their customers from fire.
I am curious. What was it about the property that you had inspected? What was it that made it more dangerous under his inspection? Was it the type of foliage or?
It was the access. I couldn't access
Oh, you couldn't see the whole thing?
The views and the images. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Did you mention wind modeling at all?
Yes.
Is that part of, so you can, so you could model the city and make a determination where stronger winds are versus less winds and the condition?
Yes, so we're using the local weather base station that's nearby. What would be really nice in the near future, there is a very cheap weather station that we could install strategically just to triangulate the very granular wind. And this is really important because this changes everything. And so again, the more granular we get into this, and those are cheap. And if we strategically place those, then I can triangulate and then inform the physical AI. And then it's updating that in real time. And you'll get a blur text message letting you know, you know, weekly or daily what the fire risk is. And you have credible data backing that up.
In a prior meeting, I had mentioned that the local utility has three weather stations in the city. Were you able, I mean, that's 30-second data. Were you able to get that?
I remember Dr. Flaxman, our chief scientist. I know he was looking at that data. So he may have integrated that with our weather modeling scientist that's also on our team. So I do know that he was looking at that.
Because that's already been looked at by fire scientists. And those are strategically placed
Correct.
To be able, in the city.
We can integrate that immediately. Yep. I'll do a follow-up as well.
And then I guess the last question I had, I know this probably isn't this permutation of your model and what you're doing, but is there going to be an ability to provide our fire department with, you know, what are our critical fire days so that they can get that messaging out to residents that, hey, look, this is, you know, this is a day not to be using, I mean, it's kind of the ordinance that, I think
Pinnels.
Councilmember Engelhardt, you brought up about a city that had passed an ordinance about on, like, the extreme fire days. You're not to
Oh, Laguna Beach?
Yeah. Not that we need to go to that extreme, but there is cities that are saying on these extreme fire days, don't use power tools. Don't be out
Correct, yes.
Doing certain things in the yard and having open flames and things we shouldn't be doing. But does the model get there eventually where we can predict for the city of La Habra Heights, this is a high-fire day, and give Chief Martin and others the ability to bring in additional staff? And, you know, staff a second engine, pre-position resources? Does it get that granular at some point?
Excellent question. And yes. And what's going to be important are the quarterly inspections with the AI model. And as we do these seasonal inspections, it then can become smarter specifically for La Habra Heights. It's not using a model that was trained for Griffith Park or Latigo Canyon. It's specifically for La Habra Heights. And it's learning from the historic data that's also been collected. And I think that that is a really great idea to then integrate the natural evolution of the physical AI to then give that level of actionable intelligence so that the community and residents can also take action ahead of time to prevent any fires on days of extreme weather or if there's large fuel loads, there's a lot of dry shrubbery. So I would definitely love to add that on as we start to develop the platform. So to answer your question, Mary, yes.
All right.
One more quick. Is this just foliage? Or would this detect wood piles or big piles of junk that aren't organic?
Yes, so what I'm doing right now, well, this Thursday, I've taken a bunch of wooden planks, fence material, and treated and non-treated. So with my hyperspectral sensor this Thursday, I'm placing it at the Arboretum in Arcadia. And I'm looking for phosphorus to show that the wood has been treated or not. So a lot of the fires recently as well with Altadena and Pacific Palisades, it was IBHS and other fire scientists found that it was the fence that was actually creating a line to the structure in itself. So to have that knowledge, that was our next step. To answer your question about garbage and stuff in the backyard, that is definitely possible. That's not a focus of ours right now. What will be important, it's the wooden decks that are attached to the structure. It's the fence that's going to the structure. That would be something to think about. But I'm just starting that right now with the fences specifically to see if they've been treated with phosphorus or not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Like on a deck, you described a deck. A deck could be built with 3/4-inch IP or something, or it could be built with heavy planks. And how do you differentiate something like that?
Yeah, well, I have not focused on the decks yet. It was a point of discussion. Recently attended a Wildland Urban Interface Training Session at the U.S. Forestry Headquarters in Arcadia. And one of the highlights that IBHS brought together was their focus on the decks. They kept talking about the decks and the fences. So that's another stage moving forward, possibly on decks. Right now, my main focus is on the vegetation and then the fences as well.
The other question I have is being the devil's advocate, has the insurance companies reached out to you at all? Or is there any interface with any insurance companies? Are they interested in all this?
Very much so. Underwriters are extremely interested in the technology. I'm using my natural intuition, which is go where my passion and my heart is leaning me towards. And I think that talking to insurance companies right now doesn't sound that fun, but being out in the field with SPF 500 and Fire Marshal Jorgensen, that sounds like a lot more fun for me. So I want to solve this problem first. And hopefully, the goal will be to bring down insurance rates. And, you know, create a much more affordable insurance programs for Los Angeles County, Orange County, and not have insurance companies, just create blobs of threat without knowing what's there. Because there are residents that are in compliance and their neighborhoods are good neighborhoods. They shouldn't be penalized for, you know, this blob of not knowing.
All right, let me, Stephen Blackdon, I think you had.
Stephen Blackdon, Sutron Road. Maybe I'm looking for too much, but that was very sparse and didn't answer questions that you asked last month. What's important is where the rubber meets the road, like the picture up there, Skyline, which looked like up by the top with the water tank. Councilmember Steffler was asking about it. Put the picture back up. Take a laser pointer and show where's bad vegetation, where's wet vegetation? And then what do you do with the information? Chief Jorgensen said he had passed the property. What's the difference in the look of a tree that's red versus one that's green by that spectral thing? And last time, it was said that several pictures were going to be shown. But we only saw one. There was an article in the LA Times today about the state and various sub-agencies going to be using similar, the same technology for getting maps and pictures. The county aerials have really good resolution and they have obliques, the 3D where you can see from the side. And then talking about privacy, that 3D image that we saw, which was up there for a second or two, you could see the house clearly. If a person was there, you'd be seeing the person. Will drones be marked with the city logo? So when someone sees something buzzing overhead, that they'll know it's the city and not some malintended individual? And then a lot of the city is total tree canopy. The image put up there with the house saying you can see under the trees, that was only because there was a open patch of land and you had an angle. But what about where you have total canopy cover and you can't see the ground? How are you going to see the lots that have, you know, three and four-foot-high dead weeds? Will they be flying under the trees to see that? Or is that just a lost category that we won't know? It'll be a question mark. And then still, we'll need to be done roadside clearance inspection lot by lot. But the most important thing is what are you going to do with information? I didn't hear that. Okay, you have that picture of the lot on Skyline. What gets done with that? What's different than what's done now? I mean, does the fact that it shows red tell the fire marshal that he should write those people up even though he can't get into the property to inspect it? I mean, people need to know what's going to be happening. And that was one that looked like it was okay. So how many people are going to be getting written up that every other year they've been fine? And now they say, gee, the tree looks good to me. Well, this shows red on this map. So I think a lot more explanation, as I said, rubber-on-the-road stuff needs to be spelled out. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen. Anyone else? John?
John DeVincenzo, Crest Road. Wasn't planning on speaking, but I'm really impressed with the technology this gentleman is offering to us. But I was completely turned off with the gimmicky aspect of it. It seems like the presentation with the dramatic music, and it was more like a commercial that I was being sold. And it was losing me. I was interested in the technology and the potential of it. But I was not interested in being, for example, entertained to keep my attention instead of giving the facts. Facts can be boring, unfortunately. And this kind of stuff is geeky, and I like that. But at the same time, I didn't like being, in a way, tugged down to, to keep my attention going. I think it was rather razzle-dazzle. Dramatic music was part of the, why I considered to be kind of pompous, kind of like presenting it down to me, to my level. Also, in the explanations the gentleman was given, if he could not talk short talk and not give us the old, the different satellites and the timelines and the different bites and bits, just talk to us as we would be residents who are not technically inclined and just give us the basic information, what we're trying to solve here. When he spoke about the absolute of, I will not allow any garbage into the system, that was an absolute. And in science and technology, especially with computers and AI, I don't know if, maybe not the person, not the person to actually comment on this, but I don't think you can actually make 100% guarantees that I will not allow this to happen. So there's that possibility there might be an error in the system. It's just, it's part of the nature of the process. So that was basically it. I like the technology. I'm also thinking about, gee, how much is this going to cost us? And I'm willing to put up my two cents and, you know, contribute. It's, I think it's very, it's good. But at the same time, give us the straight facts so we can understand it better and feel better about it as we get involved with it. Thank you.
Can I just make a comment? Excuse me. So I think what Mayor Papisa said earlier, this is another tool. So if we use this technology to identify a problem property, then we will send a human to go inspect it. That's all we're going to do with this knowledge. It's not going to give us the ability or the authority to just write somebody up just based on a picture. We're going to have to go and inspect it and say, okay, what's going on here with this property? If he's having trouble with access, then we're going to have enough manpower to help support him in that regard. So we can get some boots on the ground that have firefighting equipment. Maybe if it requires a rope to get down steep terrain to look at it, then so be it if we have to inspect that property. But we have to look at it before we can make any kind of determination. And I think the information that we're being provided, if it's affordable, would be a useful tool. Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, just one more thing to this discussion. Yeah. So one of the things, there's been a tension while I was on the Planning Commission and subsequent to that time between the, you know, the current rules about the 50 feet, 100 feet, 200 feet clearing. And a lot of the new information that's coming out presently that large trees close to residences can be protective, but only if they're not inherently flammable and they're wet. And in many ways, this technology can help us discriminate for individual residences that are not going to be, you know, these rules are not retrospective, right? So we know as a practice matter, people aren't going to be tearing out trees unless they're, they don't like trees. And, but I believe that this is helpful because I think we're going to see the data that's going to clearly come out that a wet tree that's close to a residence is a very positive thing. So as we continue to work in this, it would be wonderful if we sort of kind of focused on that a little bit to compare, once we do a visual inspection, to say, well, that tree's not so green, right? They're not watering that tree. It's an older tree, whatever. Or maybe even the species of genus. But I think that's, I'd love to have that part of this investigation that we're going through. Thank you.
Yeah. All right. I can sort of wrap it up. It seems like we've talked about FireScore IA a couple of times. Council is interested in what the maps potentially would look like. And I think if this is something that council's interested in us, like, exploring further and moving forward with. The next part of this piece is sort of that public participation part of it. So it would be that if council is interested in it and has a potential for that this might be a good tool in the toolbox for the fire department related to that, it would be sort of that. that probably the direction for us to move forward, have a workshop or two, start putting out some information about it so we can start publicizing it a little more. Now that there might be a level of interest at the council level for us to go out and do some more of that public outreach part of it before we bring anything formal back to the council to adopt and move forward with implementing a program like this.
I would absolutely support that sometime before high fire season. And, you know, this should be one of the topics I would ask that we bring EPC. EPC has some, I think, some good material. And then maybe couple it also with when we do the fire engine. So we'll have, you know, hopefully we'll have people here anyway to see maybe the fire, the bright shiny object is the thing that gets people here and then we can have the conversation around this tool and the tools that EPC has. Because I, you know, we need to get, we need to get people using things, tools like watch duty. We need to have people understand the work that EPC is doing around the space and also the work that the fire marshal is doing. I think we have enough agenda topics to, to have an actual workshop around this. And then once we have the workshop and people can see the maps for more than a couple seconds on a presentation and have a discussion around what it really means to the city to be able to move in this direction. Like I said, I'm, I'm really concerned when we drive the city and just the stuff you can see concerns me. But is that the right stuff? You know, is that the stuff we really need to be looking at? Or is there other things that we can't see that create a larger, more systemic risk to the city? No, we want to wrap up, but Brian, you.
No, I'm really, I'm really on board with this whole thing. I mean, the number one threat to our community is the wildfires and that's our number one thing that we really need to work on and address. And it's, it's really gotten scary from the standpoint, a lot of the citizens are not able to obtain fire insurance any longer and they have to join the state, state pool and things. And it's not only that, it's going to affect the saleability of our, our homes if they're in a high fire hazard area and, and you can't get insurance due to that reason, what is the saleability of the house? You know, that totally reduces the price of the house. So I mean, I'm totally on board if we can somehow mitigate the fire risk in the city, that'd be great.
It's just this weekend, you know, in Southern California, half a dozen fires burned. All right. So we'll, more work to come. We'll continue, you know, exploring the tool. And I agree with, you know, our comment, our commenters that we need to bring this to a more presentable, and I think, go back to, I mean, these are, these videos are online, so maybe take a look at them, take the comments to heart and figure out if we do, as we move into the workshop space, how we can bring something that's relatable to the, to the residents of La Habra Heights. I know your video there is probably something for investors and other people to look at, but let's, let's make it something that's a little bit more relatable for folks here. All right. Thank you. Thank you for the commenters. Thank you for council for having a good, robust conversation on something. I think that's really, really important. All right. Next, something else that's really important. Item 18.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item before you, at our last city council meeting on July 28th, we had a public hearing and a first reading of Resolution 2025-2021. And also two ordinances related to the adoption of the housing element. So as part of those, through the ordinances and the one resolution affecting the general plan amendments, have to come back for a second reading and adoption. So before you tonight is that second piece of it. It is the two ordinances and the one resolution for the general plan here for a second reading. So it is the same that went out last time that we heard at our last meeting. The recommendation tonight is to adopt Resolution 2025-21, a resolution of the City Council of the City of La Habra Heights, California approving an amendment to the land use element of the general plan and modify the multifamily residential designation and making findings under SEQA and approve a second reading and adopt ordinance 2025-01. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of La Habra Heights amending the official zoning map and making findings under SEQA and approve a second reading and adoption of ordinance 2025-02. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of La Habra Heights, California, amending Article 7 Development Code and zoning ordinance and Article 12 Definitions of the La Habra Heights Municipal Code to establish regulations for multifamily residential development and making other findings under SEQA. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer for you.
Any questions?
Move the adoptions of Resolution 2025-21, 2025-01, 2025-02.
Let's pause that for just a second. Let me ask the, I think I've got a card here for someone. Glenn.
Good evening, council members, staff, public. I'm Glenn Shepherd, Hacienda Road, La Habra Heights. Congratulations. I'm presuming that you will approve the second reading tonight of the 2129 housing element. I support your taking this action to get us out of a difficult situation with the state of California. Unfortunately, this plan's going to continue the destruction of our general plan. And you're going to spend a lot of money on, what do they call it? Let's see, mandated costs, unfunded, I believe is the term. In theory, you can increase your developer fees. That's probably not going to work too well, especially with the housing and community development people wanting to see support for developers. Last April 14th, I ask you to consider endorsing the Our Neighborhood Voices Initiative to take back local control of the planning process. Okay? I checked that site today and our city is not listed as an endorser, nor are any of you as individuals. If we, the people, do not fight the state over this issue, we're slowly going to lose our unique piece of California. Don't Manhattanize La Habra Heights. Please help fight for local control. Go to Our Neighborhood Voices, read the materials. SCAG is an endorser and SCAG is, I believe, a part of your association of governments. So maybe you might consider endorsing that proposition to take back local control. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. All right, so I have a motion.
Second.
Norm?
Reluctantly, yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Unquestionably yes.
Sorry, Greg.
Unquestionably, yes.
Okay, John says yes. All right. 19. Oh, sorry. 18. No, no, 19.
19. This one is strategic planning session workshops, and I will hand it over to our assistant city manager, Angie Martinez.
Good evening, mayor and council members. At the special city council meeting held July 28th, city council directed staff to prepare a proposed agenda plan for a series of upcoming public workshops focused on sustainability planning for the city. These workshops will be held according to the subject matter with one topic addressed monthly. The series will also follow with an, ending with a general session to gather additional, excuse me, to gather additional resident input and to solicit suggestions for a path towards long-term sustainability. We've come up with a few workshop topics and focus area. The first meeting will be in regards to street improvements, then that will follow with fire department, then public safety, city administration, and then just a general session to discuss revenue and other challenges the cities, the city may be facing. It's recommended that the city council review the proposed topics and approve the following workshop dates that, that are listed on the staff report.
All right. Any discussion? Greg, I know you were.
We selected these dates on Saturday morning, 10 o'clock, because they immediately precede the city council meeting on the following Monday. The idea being that we would have, be able to give immediate work, immediate feedback from the Saturday workshop session to the council for dissemination to the residents. The individual bullet items for each of these, each of these headings are not exclusive, but they do, they do, they do all focus on financial stability and sustainability for the city. So as a council member, I would strongly support adopting this and I will personally attend every single meeting and be as active as I possibly can in helping us come to good decisions.
I just, I guess one thing, the order. Do we want to consider moving the general session on revenue up first? Because isn't that gonna, is that going to drive a lot of this? Or do we see the other ones informing that session? Is that why we placed it last?
Yeah, my, my sense was, I thought about that, but my sense was, if we get good attendance on the workshops, people are going to raise those issues because they're going to come up. Like I can't, there's no question that Tony DiNato's not going to talk about the issues inherent in a very old assessment. So the revenue issues I was thinking would come up during each of these separate sessions. And then in the general session, we'd attempt to say, okay, we had, we came up with some suggestions, but now let's hear what your suggestions are. Because it's, at least by that time, it should be relatively apparent what our, what our chances of sustainability are without taking some sort of action. I, I'm not opposed to changing it around, that was just my thinking. That's why I ordered it that way.
And so the dates are the Saturday before the council meeting?
Yes.
Do we want to think about maybe moving a week out to give us time to agendize, to better agendize that topic? Because if you have it on Saturday, all you can have is a very general comment about what we're going to discuss. And I'm, I'm kind of reacting to some, at least twice now I've heard from, in public comment, council or city do a better job of putting on the agenda what the topic's going to be so people will show up?
I, I don't oppose that idea. I was, my thought was that it was probable that the council was going to pay attention to these anyway. And all I was going to do is, I was hoping to do is do a brief summary of that, have staff do a brief summary of the general responses to the questions that were raised. But I'm, I'm, I just set the dates because I thought it would be helpful to have us immediately come back before the council to increase the importance of what we're doing.
Raff and Angie, what do you, what do you guys think? Is that okay, having it that Saturday and that gives you enough time to get stuff pulled together for council on?
Like you said, ultimately, if we have it on the Saturday before the council meeting, it's more of a generic report in there as to like, council held a workshop, these were the topics and, and sort of the agenda points of it, not as much of like, time to wrap that feedback in. If you wanted to look at something earlier so we could have the workshop before we put the agenda packets out, then we can provide a little more of what happened at the, the workshop in the staff report for council to look at.
So this is August, so we would have the first one in September? We can, we can try one and see how it goes and we can always adjust if it doesn't work.
I'm not sure I understood what your, your suggestion was. You would move it further before the council meeting?
I would do it the Saturday of the week before. So move it out, move it forward.
I just want to say, on the, on the September 6th one, I did talk to the Heights Life and they can still, they like to get, in order to get this in the September 1st Heights Life, it has to be to them usually by August 10th. But he's, he can squeeze in something about September 6th. So I would say not move that one, because it.
I'm, I'm saying move it, if, if we did this, we'd move the September 6th one into the last week of August.
Well, that, then you won't have any notice in the Heights Life, is what I'm saying.
Oh, 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 I see what you're saying. You want to get the notice of the workshop in the Heights Life.
Right.
Not the result of the workshop.
Right. And he can, he can make the 6th and then the other ones, maybe you, if you want.
Okay. Well, let's just keep, let's, let's do this. Let's just keep it, September, the first one, let's put it on the 6th, let's see how the logistics work out. And if it, if it works, we'll leave them and if not, we'll, we'll adjust.
I mean, that's my big concern is getting the information out to the people so they know about it. And that's.
The entire city watches this meeting, so.
Sure they do.
Sure they do.
Okay, so yeah.
And for Andrea.
Yeah, right. So let's do, let's do September 6th then and we'll get it in the Heights Life. I'll even put it in my mayor's column.
Oh, that's, yeah, he said that. And then, but then you're going to have the same problem in October. You gotta get it.
John can mention all of, all of these dates in the mayor's column.
What I'm saying is if he wants, if John, if the mayor wants to move it back earlier than these.
Let's not overthink it. Let's just, let's, let's do September.
I think it's important to get it in the Heights Life.
So I will put it in my mayor's column. Hopefully, I guess, hopefully more people read the mayor's column than watch this. So I'll put it in the mayor's column as a topic, letting people know about the workshop, first one being September 6th. I will put in the mayor's column the topics of all the workshops, saying that they'll be monthly and just leave it at that. And then we can publish the dates.
Later.
Later.
Okay, but you're not going to be, okay, but you're not going to be able to get the October. Under your theory, there's going to be another meeting in the end of September because it's going to be a week before October 4th. Anyway.
I'll figure it out.
Okay, so.
I'll put something in there.
So I should tell him not to, just to do the first date? Let's just.
I will, I will figure out how I want to do this in the mayor's column and then I'll, I might put the first and second date in there and then we can figure out how it's working.
Why don't you work with him?
I'll work with, I'll work with Dan.
But get it in the Heights.
I'll work with Dan.
Okay.
The October date is actually in the method you would like to do it because there's another meeting happening here on the 11th, October 11th. So it's the October meeting, the October 4th is earlier than, than it would normally be.
Okay, so I'll just.
Because there's another.
I'll put the September date and the October date as the two meetings that we'll put on calendar for now and then that'll give us a month to figure it out. And if we need to adjust, we'll adjust for November. Okay? All right.
Just one thing, when we get the light on Alacara Crest up and functioning and so forth, I would like to see after maybe three or four months, perhaps shoehorn some comment about that into one of these meetings, see how people are, are working with it, if they like to see some adjustments or whatever. I was thinking perhaps shoehorn it into the public safety, or maybe have a separate one on that. On the other hand, maybe it works out perfectly and we don't need any public comment and everybody's happy, but I rather suspect there'll be some suggestions.
So I will, just to put a pin in this one.
Right.
I'll get in the September 6th and October 4th date into the Heights Life. We're good with those two topics. And then after September 6th, if we need to adjust. we'll, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, just a suggestion, something to think about down the road.
Okay. All right, any other comments on this? I don't have any cards on this one, okay. Let's move on, item 20.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This one is an agreement with Civic Solutions for Contract Planning Services. As we all know, there's a backlog of planning projects to be done. Staff has reached out to some consulting firms to see if we could get some interim help to help get through some of the planning projects, be available to answer questions and assist public at the counter. With that, we did find that Civic Solutions has someone that is available and that can start for us and be able to, to help us with the, the planning portion of it, as we complete a recruitment for a, a contract, for a full-time principal planner for it. Civic Solutions has provided staffing for the city in the past, and a couple of times we've had a couple of different planners that, that worked here on a term basis from Civic Solutions. We, we did meet with the candidate that would be doing it, her name is Elizabeth, a very qualified young lady who's a senior planner, lives locally, will be able to come into the office a couple of days a week, and then has the ability to, to change and adjust as we need to see fit to it. So the, the request is for the council to authorize city manager to execute an agreement in the form approved by the city attorney with Civic Solutions for Contract Planning Services for a term of one year. A lot of times in the past, we've done this for six months, but I would like to ask for a year that'll give us time to recruit, bring on a, hopefully a full-time staff member, and give a little bit of time to have some transition there as well, with a little bit of additional staffing to help that new principal planner not get overloaded right out of the gate. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Questions for staff?
I mean, you have up to 30 hours, what do you feel the minimum is that should be working?
I think the minimum would be like 20 hours.
Okay.
And, oh, this would be onsite, or?
Available, available to be here onsite, if we need to adjust, has the ability to adjust as well, or just do plan review offsite and provide that information back and-
Any other questions?
Was there any public comment on this?
Nope.
The only other concern, I guess, that, that I have is, she's not gonna have a knowledge of the city, so that's still, you're gonna end up having to work closely over there and watch what she approves and doesn't approve, and it's-
We've already talked about, yeah, some transition period there where I'll be able to provide that assistance, shadow and kind of learn those unique characteristics of the community as, as part of it, and look at and review as stuff that she's, she's looking at and approving.
Okay.
Question, any other questions?
Move to approved staff recommendation?
Second?
Second.
Norm?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
John's yes. All right, item 21.
Item 21 is a continuation from our discussion at the July meeting. It does potentially involve some discussion with mayor's employer. You may have to recuse yourself, at least for a portion of it.
I have to wake up, I have to wake up.
Yes.
Let's see. I forgot. Hey, does anybody, staff report?
I'll give you some, some background. Okay, so at our last meeting, we had talked about a request to modify the construction management and inspection portion and contract with NV5 related to the traffic signal and restriping project on Hacienda Road. We had a couple of conversations related to, more specifically, the height of one of the poles that needed to be modified due to overhead lines there, and looking at the, where the breakdown of the plan and the pole became. So going back through it, we looked at trying to figure out, what do we have for Edison? Do we have anything in writing for Edison related to the height of the pole, clearance, approvals, anything like that? So we went back to the design engineer, the company that is preparing the plans for us and, and making the drawings and reviewing everything into that. They did not have anything in writing for Edison. It took us a minute, he's actually out of the country, so we worked to set up a, a meeting last week. Unfortunately, time zone differences didn't work out. So myself and Gerald, our city engineer, met with him earlier today, this afternoon, related to looking at it. From what we know, he doesn't have anything in writing from Edison that says that the, they looked at and approved the heights of the poles in those locations. Their review and approval looked at meter location, underground, and those types of clearances to it. Through the design process, we submitted utility requests for the utilities that are in that area overhead, which are Edison and AT&amp;T, for them to provide mapping information so we can have an idea of where maps and things are, and where utilities are located. Edison provided a map that showed line locations to it, and then from there, the design engineer has to look at those maps, decipher those maps, and understand the heights and clearances that may be required as part of, depending on the voltage of those lines in those locations. I believe when the design engineer was looking at it, he interpreted that if you are 7,000 volts or less, it is low, low voltage, and requires a four-foot offset from between the signal pole and the lines. If it's over 7,000 volts, then it is considered high voltage, and it requires a six-foot offset to it. From the, the conversation we had with the design engineer today, when he was looking at the plans and looking at the other intersection at Western Hacienda, he made an interpretation that it was a low voltage line, so under 7,000 volts, which required a less clearance than what it actually is, which I believe is over 12,000 volts that run through that line, through it. So that's where some of the breakdown into it. So then it was when they were going ready to stand the pole, that it became the issue of like, it's too close to the, the pole. So it looks like it's probably not so much an Edison thing where we can go back after Edison to say, hey, you approved the heights and the design and the location and everything for that, we don't necessarily have that in writing. So I think that sort of eliminates Edison from our conversation as to the, the heights of that particular pole. So I don't know if we can keep the mayor in the back, or do we wanna invite him back out, or just, yeah. So then we would, then we went back and started, then it sort of falls back to like the design engineer, so we'd be going back to the design engineer, who designed the plans for it, as we kind of looked at it. NV5 did not, they weren't contract, it wasn't their consultant, they didn't hire the design firm to design the intersection, they are providing construction management and inspection services for it. Our new city engineer, Gerald, he came on board basically when this project was at like 100% complete plans, so he knew, he didn't spend any time looking at it, because when he sort of started, it was that this project needs to go to bid, we gotta bid it, bid it, bid it, put it out. So he didn't dive into it other than talking to the design engineer and saying, okay, you've worked with your telecom companies, you've been working with Edison, you've been working with the water district and the gas company, whoever has utilities out there, and have them look at it. The county had been through several rounds of review, it goes to Caltrans for review, Caltrans looks at it more of just where it's going and not so much design aspect of it. So really, it would be then going back to the design engineer would be where we would need to go related to the cost for the height of the pole.
And who was the design engineer?
Design engineer is GTS, Rawad Yani Hani, Hani.
Sounds like an errors and omissions claim against the design engineer.
Potentially, yeah. So we just, we met with him today, this afternoon, so he's looking back through his records again, and granted, he's, he's overseas at the moment, he's not here in the office. So this may be one where we may potentially want to continue it, to let us have that conversation with him when he gets back into, into the country and has the ability to look through his files and plans. He has staff looking for things right now to provide us additional information related to the height of the pole.
Did they do a field dimension measurement of the line?
That I don't know. I know the area was surveyed for the, for the project, the whole area was surveyed. I don't believe they, as part of that survey, looked at what the height of the line is there.
There's specialized tools for that.
For those things. So that's the part we're trying to get that information right now.
Do we know much of that $68,000 additional? Well, yeah, 68, how much of that was attributable to the whole pole issue?
Not a lot. The, the cost of the increase to it is more of working days, is the best way to look at it, is working days, days to work. I think at that time when we were looking at CM and inspection, there was a big thing on like, the cost of those, and the amount of time we were spending on those things. So they tried to slim it down to as much as the minimum that we would potentially need for the signal. And obviously, when you have three contractors involved, three agencies involved, it starts to get really complicated when stuff actually starts ending up in the field, and we have conflicts between design plans that were approved by engineers in the office of the county and the inspectors in the field, that's a, ah, I wanna tweak this a little bit, I wanna change this a little bit, and trying to work through all those issues, that's really the additional time that goes to it. The best way they break it down to is like, working days. The agreement with the contractor is 100 working days is what the, that, that agreement is for, is 100 working days to be able to do the, the work for the traffic signal. Gonna be close to that when you look at actual working days to it. NV5, they only bill like the time that they're there, so it's, construction manager, when he's dealing with coordination of contractor and inspector, other agencies, staff, that's when he bills his time, the inspector bills his time when he's out in the field, when they're working in the field. So it's not necessarily like, they were here today, it's eight hours. It's, if they were there for two hours, it's two hours, if they were there for 10 hours, it's 10 hours, the inspector's out in the field to it. So realistically, it may not be $68,000 in total, we're, we're getting very close to the end of this project. We're now into hopefully the final stretch of it, but it seems like this one is a project that just keeps going and going and going.
If, if there's significant enough money involved, making the NO claim is appropriate. That means you gotta somehow figure that out. I mean, the delays in ours completing our project is a, is a financial burden to us in one way, but somehow NV5, who I can't, I'm not enchanted with their way their invoices appear, I can't, you can't allocate them to certain functions easily, the way I look at it. It looks like a lawyer's invoice to me, which is, I intended to be obfuscating, but in any event, I mean, you gotta figure out that number, we now know who the potential responsible party is, gotta figure out the number and then bring back to us that. And that leaves us with the question, I guess, Madam Mayor Protem, what do we do with a $68,000 bill?
Well, didn't you just say we need to figure out?
He, we don't have, we don't have present knowledge, here's what you-
Right, we put the matter over.
We, we got a $68,000, well, how we can do that? We have a $68,000 bill, which we put over once already. Nothing in that bill tells Rafferty exactly how much it cost us additional because of the mistake by the original design engineer. That's gotta be determined, that's investigation, trying to do, develop that and then develop a settlement. But the, that's only a portion of the $68,000 bill, so as much as I don't like it at all, I, I don't see how we can hold up NV5 for something they didn't do wrong. I mean, it's a bigger issue as to whether their billings are comprehensible. To me, the couple of times I've looked at them, I'm not excited about that, but you still have that, and I don't know, Rafferty can speak to whether we should put this over and wait to pay them until we have resolved the other, the question of the E and O claim against the design engineer? But I mean, they're discrete issues, I think.
Well, I've reviewed NV5's bills a little bit, and sometimes they bill a month late, so I don't really think this is gonna tank them, and it would give Rafferty more time to investigate, so.
Brian, go ahead.
Did NV5 have anything to do with hiring GTS, or who hired GTS, or how'd that come about?
So we actually brought GTS on board way back in the day, pre-COVID, pre-Hacienda failure, to look at traffic calming. So they came on board for traffic calming, then we had to close Hacienda, so then we kept them, like, we were still looking at traffic calming, and then, once, we were waiting for the traffic to sort of normalize after we reopened Hacienda in the beginning of 2020, just as the number started to normalize, then we hit COVID. And then the numbers dropped back off because everybody was work from home, and schools were remote and everything like that, so traffic dropped back off. And then in that process, there wasn't anything going on traffic calming-wise, so we moved into, there was some grants available through Caltrans, so they submitted the initial grant package for, for what we have for the, restriping the traffic signal and guardrails to, to, to Caltrans to help us get those grants, and then they bid on the signal portion of it, so we put those RFPs out for traffic signal and, and guardrail design. They didn't bid on the guardrails, most people didn't bid on the guardrails. They bid on the traffic signal, and were, council awarded the traffic signal that one. So they didn't come to us through NV5, this was something that we had looked at a number of years ago, starting with a different issue, looking at traffic calming back in like 2019.
So do we want this to come back to us, or wanna give Rafferty the authority to pay NV5 and to negotiate an errors and omissions claim against GTS, or how would we wanna do with it?
I say put it over. I see there's a hand raised for public comment. Mr. Blagden?
Thanks, you led the front row. Yeah, there was a card in, but John's not here. Yeah, if you look at NV5's proposal, they're responsible for keeping the project on track. They knew there was all different parties and jurisdictions involved. If they didn't think they could do it in 40 days, they shouldn't have put in a proposal for 40 days. And then they shouldn't benefit because they failed to do on their job. Then regarding the pole, it sounds like it was an interpretation error, but how much voltage was there, they guessed where they should have confirmed. Now, I had sent you a plans excerpt on the ADA ramps, and you noticed at the bottom of the plans, there's a box for city engineer approval. I haven't seen the pole plans, but I would guess probably more than 50% likely that there's also a box on that for city engineer approval. So I don't think on either you can absolve NV5 of any blame. There's also a log that is kept for every day, what happens, so you can find out exactly how long that pole change caused, how much the delay was. Then the other issue was the ADA ramps at the northeast and southwest corners. The plans I sent you, the 90% plans, they showed a much larger landing area for the ADA ramps, but they were changed, and actually, they looked like they complied with ADA requirements. But after those 90% plans were done, someone said, we need to change this, for whatever reason, I don't know. But now they look like they don't comply. So who decided to do the change? Who did the plans of the change? I imagine NV5 had a look at the changes and approved them. So I don't know if, in the meantime, it's been able to be determined if they- So I don't know if in the meantime, it's been able to be determined if they truly don't comply with ADA. But again, there's responsibility for NV5 to have made sure the plans were correct and then the work was done properly. Thank you.
I'll pull it back to the council. So.
I can speak to you related to the curb ramps and the ADAs. Based off what's there was in the field, they did a design change related to the curb ramps to them. And speaking with the engineers as part of looking at design engineers, what they looked at, make sure they meet it. They both said, yes, it meets the requirements for ADA. Those truncated domes are okay in that particular location. They can meet those circles. Engineers being engineers, sometimes it's hard to follow. Granted, I know what I talk to, sometimes it's hard to follow as well. But I reached out to our building official to have him take a look at it as well, to make sure he is probably the most familiar with the ADA, dealing with it the most out of the building side of it. Granted, he's mostly looking at it not in the public right of way aspect of it, but on like, on private property and buildings and commercial aspect of it. But we had a brief conversation about, I shared Mr. Blackdon's email with Scott and looked at it. And he feels that there is, it does meet the requirements of ADA. We're just working to reconfirm that and make sure there's no other issues with it. Need to send Scott a couple of addition, additional photos, a little wider than Water and Stevens' email and potentially a site visit from Scott to just verify. I just wanted to run it past another person after speaking to the engineer, saying, no, no, it's fine. You can do this and you can do that. Within that turning radius, the truncated domes are allowed to be within that area. I wanted to just run that past another person, which is our building official, who's very familiar with the ADA requirements.
So you, you wanted this to come back, right?
Well.
I mean, I think we have two issues myself.
That's Mr. Wildridge's recommendation, and it does seem like it could use a little more investigation.
I mean, obviously, GTS made a mistake and there's an errors and omissions claim there. I think they should probably, $68,000 is a huge amount jump. And maybe we should go back and try to negotiate that down.
Yeah, I support moving it over to the next meeting.
And negotiate that figure down?
Yes.
Okay.
I also recommend that the, the email that Glenn Peterson sent to Carol and Brian, and I ended up with a copy of, he added into the public record today. Glenn's a specialist in this area, and he pointed out exactly, he's, he's probably, apparently a very acknowledged expert in specifically this kind of design and roadwork. So I think that will be helpful in our negotiations. He points out that it's pretty clear that it's a design engineer's responsibility.
Yeah, and I wanted to, a lot of times I don't respond to these emails for Brown Act violations and things, but I do have Glenn's email and I really want to thank him publicly for, he gave a lot of thought to this and really laid out the specific details on it. And it was really, really helpful, I know, to myself.
Okay. Can I just continue it or do I need a motion and a vote? No, okay. All right. Let me get, Mr. Pissbeeson?
Doesn't want to be disturbed.
Edison's looking good.
All right, so.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. Twenty-two. This, this is a request from the planning commission at their last couple of meetings. They had a discussion related to city's general plan. It was adopted by the city back in 2004. So we're a little more than 20 years out from when the general plan was adopted. I know it was quite the process to make it through the general plan update back in the day. And then following that general plan update, there was another large process to be able to update the municipal codes to be in line with the general plan that was adopted. The planning commission was just looking at it as we were adopting the housing element and it's been a considerable amount of time. Their request was for the city council to at least consider initiating a general plan update or looking at the general plan or considering the potential for looking at a general plan to it. There are some elements like we've talked about that are, have a timeline to adopt them. One is the housing element, which is we're in the process of adopting. And the other one is the safety element now has an aspect of, after we adopt and certify our housing element, we'll have to update our safety element to, to meet some of those requirements. And Calfire guys are already reaching out saying, hey, we can help you with that, that safety element update for it. But at the meeting, it wasn't a unanimous decision. There was, it was 4-1 to it. And I think Commissioner Blackdon, who's here tonight, who I think maybe has a card in to talk about it, but did, did talk about the reasons why now is not the time to initiate the general plan update. Looked at back in the day, like there was quite a bit of time and effort that went into it. We had a much larger staff at the time for those things to be able to, to work on and process those things. I'm sure he's here. He can, he can comment or elaborate a little more on some of his thoughts on. Oh, did he leave? Oh, he already left.
He didn't have a, he didn't have a card. He had three items. He didn't have a card.
Yeah. So it was mostly that. He kind of talked about, there's, it's a considerable amount of time. We had a much larger staff and planning staff at that particular time before we did it. I mean, I always hear the, the number of 120 meetings to adopt the general plan. That's a considerable amount of time and effort that I don't know if we have at the moment. It was just a request for the city council to consider, or I told them I would bring it forward to you.
I understand the concern I think the planning commission has, but honestly, I, you know, Rafferty, you and I have talked about, I think we have a much more important update we need to do, which is city policies that have not been touched in many years. That put us at, at some real risk. I mean, we're seeing it in some of the personnel issues that we're dealing with right now. And, and I think I concur with Stephen. I was in the city when we did the last general plan update. I attended a few of the meetings and there were, it seemed like, meeting after meeting after meeting. And it was a huge amount of time.
We are going to have to though, by statute, update the safety element. But we don't really have a choice not to at least get that on the calendar somewhere.
But it's not a wholesale.
Oh, no, no, just.
Update of the general plan.
Just the safety element as it pertains to our adoption of the housing element. From my standpoint, I, unless staff can't support that, which may be true at the moment. But I think that is something that has to be on their agenda at some point.
I mean, I sort of understand where the planning commission is coming from, but it's, right now, it's too early. But, you know, I'm sort of thinking of next spring sometime to be talking about this.
Think we can revisit it.
In about six months?
Well, like I said, we can agendize it. I like to agendize the policy discussion because I really think, Brian, given what we've been through the last three to four years, the policies have to be updated.
No, I agree with you. That's.
Personnel policies in the city have to be updated.
That's totally different from what we're talking about here.
I know. I'm just saying, that's a major project, right? And so this, this is another.
So should we revisit this in six months?
I would say let's revisit it, no, no sooner than six months from now.
So I'll just put this back on in six months?
Any other?
Okay. Item 23, the La Habra Heights informational flyer, continued from the June 9th meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull it and continue it till September.
Wonderful.
Best comment I made all night, right?
I couldn't agree more. All right. That's the end of the administrative items. I'll move into individual council member informational items and/or required meeting attendance. Anything anyone has to share?
I just have one thing. I got a letter, they're looking for people that want to be on the grand jury. So it's, it pays $80 a day. It's in downtown Los Angeles. If anybody's interested.
There's, there's four of you that are retired. I, I have a friend that's retired and that's, he is.
But they, they seriously, it could be a really interesting thing if anybody, send, send an email to the city and we'll get them a form, an application.
Yeah, I can't, I encourage it. He, he really enjoys it.
If anybody's ever driven down, down on a regular basis to downtown LA, I served on a jury service down there once. Never again, if I could avoid it.
It includes parking.
Oh.
There you go.
As opposed to what, 10 bucks, one, 10 bucks and car fare one way, huh?
Breed hot dog?
I think it would be an interesting experience.
Before we close the session, I just, I was, I've had this wonder in my head about how many people actually watch us. Right? And so it was funny, when I got Glenn, when you forwarded me the note from Glenn Peterson, he said he'd actually watched us. And I thought, my God, I'm really excited about that.
I think we have our loyal following.
I remembered that Michael Moore told me when I was on the planning commission that he watched every planning commission meeting and every city council meeting. And I said, well, why do you do that? I mean, that's kind of like a, that's kind of like beating with a cat's whip. And he said, no, he says, if I do that, then I know what you really want me to do when I get around to inspecting properties. And I thought that was just wonderful. So I want to acknowledge Michael for doing that. And that's, that's wonderful.
We could have everybody that watches send in a lottery ticket and have a $100 prize and see how many we can.
I'll admit, I don't watch everyone, but I do use, I have an AI tool that will summarize the meetings for me and give me the highlights of each meeting. It's really, it's really an effective way to get through, it's, it works really well. So I go back, I, sometimes I'll test it and I'll actually go watch the part of the meeting that it summarized. And it does a really good job of giving you, you know, takes a two-hour meeting and condenses it down into a 10, 15-minute read. So highly recommend the tools. Anything else?
Maybe South Park can do a version of our meetings.
All right. Public comments, public comments for anything not on the agenda, or I lose control. Anything from our loyal followers in the gallery here tonight?
I do watch the meetings online, so I always keep.
All right. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.